Fourth special meeting, the county city council to order please. And ask Reverend McDougall, would you lead us in vacation?
Lord, blessed and eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful to you for life, for health, for strength. We're also thankful, God, for the opportunity to serve. We recognize, oh God, your kind, intended love, and your wisdom of word. We pray, God, that you would grant us an even greater wisdom, and we might be able to do what you've given for our hands to do. That be a blessing to us tonight, Lord, as we move forward, in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen. And if we could stand Mr. Dylan Hurst, who would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, Bill. Council on four point zero is the approval of the agenda.
I moved to approve the agenda.
That's Mr. Crisp and Mr. Colvin. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, council, I'll ask you to raise your hand, please. Affirmative vote, that's unanimous. And then we'll go to Mr. Crisp.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I know that this is something of an inconvenience to you. But Councilman Colvin and I called this meeting for this reason. On Friday last, Senator Meredith called me, he called me, and he called him. And he talked about this issue. He said to me in that conversation, am I going to get a letter from y'all? And I said, Senator, you certainly will, next week. I said, we meet again on Monday for council. We may be able to discuss it then, but I can tell you now you will get a letter from us next week. And so we were not able to discuss it on Monday night. And so, in keeping with what I said to him, Councilman Colvin and I called a meeting so that we could resolve this. Give another out to Senator Meredith, as he is expecting from us this week. Thank you, Mr. Crisp.
All right, now go to Mr. Colvin for discussion.
Yes, sir, I mean, we'll later look at the point. Just wanted to kind of make sure that we were on the same page. I know we agreed on the council, what the the letter contents would be. The legal department raised some concerns of inconsistencies with what we agreed upon, which was the items that were listed, which was governance, the annexation, opposition on the transfer, and the budget, right. And removal of members.
Where's her legal representation?
She wanted to go pull her letter, and I pulled it up. And so, I think she had prepared a letter, an initial draft, sent it out. There were, there were some issues that she raised, to include, you know, some ambiguities. And so, we wanted to make sure tonight, or have her to explain to us, to make sure that we would not be putting ourselves in an compromised position by expressing the council's will in the letter. And making sure that we understand that there's some areas that probably need to be revised, or may be caught in the bill drafting department of the legislature. So I think we just wanted to get it right, rather than send it out, you know, kind of half cocked. So that was, that was the premise behind calling the meeting. So, Mr. McDonald, can you kind of pick it up from there? I know you walked in kind of halfway through the presentation, but basically we said that you had prepared an initial letter. You had to prepare for our signatures to kind of summarize what we talked about. You also pointed out some areas that were inconsistent or not consistent with the, with the council's will that was expressed in the letter. And you prepared a revised letter, but it didn't appear that, you know, we were following that totally by email. And so, Councilmember Crisp and I, in an attempt to make sure we do it right, called the special meetings.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, as I recall, on Wednesday, what we talked about at the conclusion of the budget session, there were a couple of different paragraphs, as I recall, that the council mentioned making changes to. And as I began to draft the letter, those changes, it appeared to me that there were other sections that would need to be amended in the bill. And so I did, on Thursday, May the 28th, I sent out an email, which talked about some of the other provisions that I thought needed to be addressed. After getting some feedback from the mayor, I revised the letter to make the letter more general, and to speak to the five areas that the council, the broad areas that the council had an interest in ensuring that those would be addressed. And so those five areas were the governance piece, budget, the removal of commission members, the transfer, and the annexation. And so what I did was, speak to those generally as to what the council's interest was, and added a sentence which indicated at that time that the city council was interested in requesting that the bill be amended to, not only for those specific provisions, but the provisions in general. And that we could also send bill language consistent with that letter. So that was the letter that we drafted, that I drafted on May the 29th, and that was sent out to the council for consideration. And I guess to speak to the specific concerns, for instance, the council has said as it relates to the governance piece, that the council should retain its oversight and authority over the city's utility. And so, the governance piece is addressed in a number of different provisions, in terms of their ability to, to make contracts, their ability to manage the utility without input from the city, not only the city employees, but there's a provision that speaks to the city council. So certainly while that provision would need to be amended, there are other provisions consistent with the governance as it pertains to, as I said in my email, the ability to make contracts, the ability to enter into bulk sale agreements, power supply agreements. So those provisions would need to be changed as well. And that's what I was trying to speak to, which is, it's not just one specific section, but that the entire bill would need some modifications as it pertained to the governance piece. And so I tried to do that in the revised letter to be more general in terms of, not just that specific section, but overall, other changes. And I think that's what I tried to achieve in the May 29th letter, and that the manager, I think, also tried to achieve in his letter.
Mr. Colvin.
So, basically, if we would have sent this letter, I guess in the bill drafting department of the legislature, I'm sure they checked for consistencies, inconsistencies, and that kind of thing. So, is it normal practice that if there is some ambiguity, that they, that they address that before the final version is presented to whatever chamber?
Well, my, my understanding is that bill drafting works at the direction of the
Legislature.
The legislature. So if, and what I was trying to be very clear about, and make sure that the council understood, was, so if we were to communicate that six, and I'm just making this up at this point, that six point three needed to be changed, then my understanding would be, that's what would be changed, but that doesn't necessarily mean that other parts of the bill would be looked at.
But I'm not sure that, excuse me, I'm not sure that we said, change six point three to read this. We said, this is the general tone of the letter, and this is our feeling.
You're exactly right, Mayor, and we spoke to, there was a provision, and I apologize, I don't have
Because, you know, the terminology, bill language, I don't think ever came up in our discussion. We wanted to send a letter that relayed the way that this council unanimously felt on certain issues. And not to be specific about wherein that bill, that is, they've got professional bill writers that do that.
Yes, sir, and, and so again, what I was trying, if you recall, there's a provision in the, in the bill that spoke to, and I'm looking for it as we speak, I apologize, but there's a provision in there that speaks to the city staff, the city officers, and the city council would not have any oversight over the commission. So, when we had a discussion, it was, well, that provision should be changed to strike city council. But if you're also talking about the city council retaining governance over the commission, then in my opinion, there would be other provisions that would need to be changed, such as, as it relates to their ability to contract, or their ability to adopt a budget without council's approval. So, it's somewhat inconsistent in term of the governance piece. And I wanted to make sure that you all understood that, and then if that's the way you want to go forward, we're here and available to proceed. I'm looking for that section, six eight dot point seven, section six eight three and one, which is in the packet that was distributed. Section six eight dot seven, powers and duties of the commission. If you look at
Page two.
It's page two, but it's about
Line forty-four.
It's page two of the bill, but it's, I guess, about
Commission shall be free from the jurisdiction, direction, or control of city officers and employees, and of the city council.
Yes, sir. So what, what the discussion was that night was to strike as it pertains to the city council. But if you're talking about the governance piece, that, that was the discussion on Wednesday night.
Yeah, and that's when we came up and said, okay, well, we want to make sure that it's the governance that the city council retains. And that's when we came up with
Strike that from the, from the bill.
So read
Actually, if I recall, what we said was, strike all the labels except for the city council.
Right.
Right.
What, what you mean, Senator?
Well, what we said was, that it be literally construed to accomplish assistance purposes, except as expressly provided in the charter. And in any, in any, the commission shall be, shall be free from the jurisdiction, direction, and control of city officers and employees, and then strike the city council. They would not be approved by us.
That's right, that's right. So that's what I put in the, that's what I put in the first letter. But, that's inconsistent, if, if you do that, that's what that says there. But then when it speaks to other provisions as it relates to the powers and duties of the commission, it speaks to, you don't have to approve their budget. If you don't have to approve their budget, then that's inconsistent with your interest of maintaining our governance. But if they can make their own contracts, and they don't have to be approved by the council, that's inconsistent with the council having oversight.
Let me see if I have the letter.
And that's what, this is the first letter, that you gave me the feedback on.
Where's the second?
Here's the second.
Let me, let me be clear about that, this is where maybe I pick up. Then yesterday, as we were preparing the packet, your city attorney was at a federal settlement conference in Wilmington, and so she was out of pocket. So, that's when we put the packet together, and, and I drafted it a slightly different letter, which I thought was in the spirit of the council meeting, which essentially says, Senator, here are the five big things that everybody agreed on, but in keeping with that spirit, we don't think you can really amend the bill, so we would like you to consider this substitute bill which we've attached, which was based on which all passed in March.
Well, Senator, that's where it gets a little complicated. And that just opens up a whole other realm of debate, so.
I, I just want to be clear, what, what
That she didn't do it, then you did it, that's what you mean?
Yeah, I did, I did this, it's slightly different.
Where's Mr. McDonald's letter that you wrote last to us?
That letter, that is the letter right there.
You have enough copies?
I'll sign it, Senator.
So does that one address what it is that we
That is identical with this, I took out like a half of a line that I thought was repetitive.
Well, I don't, I, we need to sign it, because I'm not coming back tomorrow to sign it, I gotta work all day.
Bill, there it is right there. That's the letter right there.
That's the letter I sent out on
I just want to make sure, whatever goes up, we don't come back later and say, you know, we missed this, something that could have impacted the whole idea of governance. And that's, that's the thing, now, we banking on the legislators correcting or being consistent throughout that, but how would we know they're gonna do?
That's why they made the sample, sample one to go by, because that clears it up. This is the March edition with the edits, right?
I just want to make sure.
All right, Mr. Brown and Mr. Colvin. Catherine. Mr. Brown. Mr. Colvin, we'll come back to you.
So, could we, could we express to the local council in the letter, and just ask, simply ask, that, that all the charter be consistent with, with this letter?
And that is what I, that is what the, the second revised letter
Pick stuff out of a haystack, you just broadly say, that, you know, we would ask that the revised charter be reflected of these five, these five key points.
Right, which is what the revised letter of, what I attempted to do in the revised letter of May 29th.
I, I got a question with the letter. It says on the transfer, assuming that, assuming that there is, that is no less than five point seven five, or no greater than five, about six point two five. So that means that they can approve it for five point seven five. Are, are all of us good with five point seven five? Because I thought that we were, we were gonna go for six point two five.
That was the discussion, which was the range.
Five point seven five to six point two.
But that's not in the letter.
That's in that letter.
That's a draft letter.
If you look at the It's not in this letter, but it's in this.
It's in this letter, that's, yes.
Which is the letter I sent out on May 29th.
That's what we all agreed on. It's in Karen's letter and, and the one Okay, hang on, because someone else was Mr. Crisp and Mr. Ar.
Hey, you look at the draft, it is up there now. And you go to line, page three, the line nineteen twenty somewhere along there, let me say this to you. First of all, I have no problem with sending the draft, if we just get up there, and if they disapprove it, they disapprove it. But what we cannot leave in the situation where it says it there, to make a new contract, make, make this, let me say this, and y'all need to hear this. I don't care if they got a hundred million dollars in reserves, a hurricane like Katrina could break BWC. And the only recourse is for this council to tax citizens to make up any shortfall. Obviously, we would go to the Fed and FEMA and ask for grants, but beyond that, BWC has no taxing ability whatsoever. Now, if we have no governance, if we leave them with the idea that they can make contracts, we become liable on those contracts, not them. Not them. They're not an entity as such that can enter into binding agreements like that unless this charter is changed to that extent. But if it's changed to allow them to make contracts, and they go broke because of a hurricane that default on contracts, then it falls on the city because the city owns the BWC. We can't do it, folks. We can't let them have that kind of authority. And that's vested in this council that has the ability to make a shortfall by way of taxation, or whatever, or fee increases, or whatever you want to call it, okay? So I'm just gonna say this, and then I'm gonna shut up. I have no problem with sending this draft up there, and I would like for the letter to conclude by saying this, that if it is not amenable to Senator Meredith, to accept the changes that we've asked, then I ask that it be delayed in committee to allow us more time to mediate. That's my position.
Can that be expressed in the correspondence?
That's what I would like to have, in that correspondence, in the letter that goes up.
All right, Mr. Colvin, we'll come back to Mr. Brown, write it down.
Just, and I'm with you, I'm with you, but what I'm saying is, just, which is, I think, even more so important than getting this out in a six four, seven three situation, is the ten oh. I think that kind of really gets the thing, so we got to really work our way toward that. And the question becomes, if the full governance and oversight shall, shall be retained by the city of Fayetteville, can you even make a contract? Are you able to enter into an agreement, Madam Attorney, if you don't have the authority as a governing board to do anything? So I guess that's, that's the only hangup I've got with that.
And so, again, those are, yes, sir, so those are some of the provisions that would need to be revised.
And here's the provisions. It's a bold step.
Mr. Brown.
Could we ask Senator Meredith, once he thinks he, the bill writing, the bill drafting department thinks they have a final version, they send us the draft, one last, you know, that we could look at it before it goes live on the webpage?
As I said, there will shall not be a separate, nor an independent authority. So right now, as a commission, they can't enter into contracts, right?
Yes, they can, at a certain level.
But they're supposed to be in the name of the city of Fayetteville.
Right.
But, but I mean, if we, if that's, I'm sorry.
No, you go, there's a general statute that says that that limit is, what, four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand?
Ten thousand.
No, I think it's five hundred.
Oh, you mean for the future, not what they're under right now?
Right, there is a state
Already is like, is already
And I read that when we were reading the first round, and I heard him saying that.
So, so you can put that in the correspondence, like Councilmember Crisp said. You can stick this copy of what we're talking about in the back of that, but the letter says what we agreed on, right? And we've signed that.
That's being signed.
Right, you can put a Christmas card in it, that's not a binding, I mean, it's just inside, it's an enclosure, right?
You're talking about a draft bill, or you're talking about other language?
I mean, it, the only thing that we communicated in appears is the letter, right? So I, I don't have an issue with you sticking that in the envelope, but I don't think it's that complicated.
I, I don't think we need to send draft bill language or anything else up there, I think we need to communicate our ideas and let the professionals do what they do up there. And, oh, we can request, and they send us a copy so we can review it.
Right, this letter, this current letter says, thank you for your consideration. If you so desire, we can direct staff to send you bill language consistent with this letter.
Senator, I figured this is some draft, I don't know. I was trying to, I was trying to say, if the wording that I said before about allowing it to remain in, in committee to afford us more time to negotiate, if it concludes in that fashion, I'll sign it. But I also have no problem with sending this to Senator Meredith in a separate manner, saying, this is what we feel is an ideal, an ideal bill. I'll send it to him immediately, I don't want to, I don't want to do what this council doesn't want to do. But we are fighting for our lives here, folks, and we can't beat them up about it, we've got to be bold and step out there. We, we can't be, look, we didn't start the lawsuit, we didn't start this debacle, but we're in it now. And we've got to protect the interests of the citizens of this city and the rest of this city. That's what we got to do. Oh, man, I'm sorry. I'm gonna turn it off, man.
You need that uptown funk deal for you. No, no, he's not there in the west side, he's not uptown.
I would, I would surely like to, if, even if we don't officially, send Mr. Senator Meredith, saying, this is
Send the whole, send the whole packet?
I don't want to send anything that this council is not agreeable to, or this whole guy. When he called me on Friday last, and said, am I getting a letter from y'all, and I said, yes, sir, next week is the latest. I said, because we meet again on Monday, and hopefully we'll be able to hand out the little things that have been pointed out. But we'll get a letter to you, and that's why Mr. Colvin and I called a meeting, because we owe him a letter
This week.
Thank you, too. Okay, let me ask a question. This letter here was drafted by?
The letter in the packet, that, as Ted said, that letter was drafted, he drafted that
I drafted that to try to take, basically, the principles that Karen was working on, and she was, she was gone yesterday. And just have you something to look at tonight, mentioning the five basic principles, and then saying, here's a draft bill, if, if you can't pass something like this, don't pass it.
Okay, your question is, are we just, are we rushing to do this now, just to get this up?
I think we got to get him something.
Yeah, we got to get him something, so, once this goes up, it's not limited to those five brief points that we, we discussed and all agreed on, but can there be more dialogue? The senator, you know, has all, all but said, we have time, you know, we have time, but we need to give him something. But he said, we have, he has time to, to, you know, talk this thing through. So I just don't want to send this up, although it has to go up, and I'm good with it, but I don't want us to think that, okay, we sent this up, we done our job, and it's, is that the way we're looking at it? Or do we have more time after this five-point go up, to, you know, to look at it more completely with the concerns that, that the attorney has just talked to us about? I mean, is that, does it make sense, Madam Attorney?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wright, I was distracted by
The points that you brought out about the concerns
Well, those are very, the council has expressed your overall concerns, which you're conveying to Senator Meredith. It would be incumbent upon Bill drafting, or whomever, to make sure that those concerns are consistent throughout the bill. And I think what we tried to do was to draft a bill
To make it easier.
Yes.
And I would appreciate if I was a liar.
Okay, so I just don't want, once we run out of time, to find out later that, okay, there was something that, that the draft of the bill didn't, was not clarified on, or, and it's too late, you have to wait, because I'm not too up on what legislators do about the bill. Proceed, that's why I'm asking you, as our attorney, are we good?
Well, I think that the letter clearly conveys the five areas that you have concern about. What I'm hearing is that the council is agreement, in agreement on those five areas. At this point, there doesn't seem to be consensus about how we convey that in terms of whether we send specific language consistent with our interest, or just simply send the letter which says, these are our general concerns, and leave, and you leave it up to Bill drafting, and Senator Meredith working with Bill drafting to make sure that's specifically addressed. And I think what, as Councilmember Hurst just said, what we as a staff tried to do was to make an amendment, or, or put the council's interest into bill language form.
And that's my, my final comment, is that the problem has been that we've not been specific. been specific, and we give room for them to assume what we, what we mean. And, um, so I'm just thinking, once we do this brief five pointer, then we go back and then we'll be specific.
I think that's where you are tonight, is trying to figure out how, the best way to achieve that. Is it to stay general or to be specific and check, uh-
Y'all go ahead, this is, uh, Councilmember Coleman and Councilmember Chris meeting.
Well, a question for me, i- if, if this is something that's inconsistent, aren't you putting themselves up for the big challenge? Like, one half of the bill says the city council has full authority control, another half says that PWC can enter into contracts? Doesn't that give us room for it? I mean, so I'm thinking that they've got an incentive to get it right, you're, you're doing what you're supposed to do, because I would be more concerned if you didn't point this out, say, "Hey, these are, these are your possibilities for this." But, you know, I, I'm just thinking that they've got an incentive to get it right too, particularly with this being a, a controversial issue, so.
What, what, what's my question?
Just the letter that I drew.
My, my question, I, I just want to know, I, I made the point that I think the letter wasn't in, and, and I'm satisfied with the last paragraph, but I wanted to add in that paragraph that, a request that if he's not in tune with us to allow it to remain in, in committee to afford us more time to negotiate, and I need to know how many of yours are amenable to that, adding it to the letter? But if you're not, I ain't signing it.
Well, I'm, I'm-
We fight for our laws.
I'm not, I'm not.
I ain't signing it.
What are we ever gonna have?
I don't think it's to the advantage of the citizens.
We're trying to work.
I, I don't think it's our place to tell them how to do their job.
That's not what we're trying to do, Mr. Mayor. We're doing our job. If, if we do our job thoroughly, then they'll automatically understand that we're not telling them what to do, we're just sending up suggestions, that's all that is. That's all it is.
So, where are we at far?
Well, let me, can I, can I speak? Okay, so, I don't think it's advantageous for this, um, acrimonious debate to be prolonged any longer than it needs to be prolonged. I don't think it's advantageous to the citizens of this community, to the city, or to the employees of PWC. Uh, this, this debate has been going on for a long time, and I used to be an advocate of not changing the charter, but I think now we have to change the charter, and, and because there, we, we have reached such an impasse on our ability to be able to work in a collective fashion that, that I don't see any other way. And my concern is, if we continue to delay, then we're just gonna end up in court, and so now we're gonna start building legal fees, and it's gonna go on, and if we lose, they're gonna appeal. If we lose, we're gonna appeal, and I don't think it's to the benefit of the city for this to be at the same point of, of deliberation it is today, a year from today. And so, you know, the whole idea, and I was happy to see that the council, and we were all unanimous, was to give a strategic response, which is really, I think, the purview, and, and unfortunately, I think PWC did send it up, and that's, but I think for us to provide a strategic framework of what it is we want, a- and I'm not a bill drafter, so I, I, and, and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want, you know, I did stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, but, but, but the bottom line is, I don't feel comfortable writing that language, because I, I think that's where you let the experts who do that write it, and then I don't have a problem with them sending it back to us, but I don't think it's to anybody's advantage to punt this down the road, and a year from now, we're still deliberating on this. There are very important issues that we need to be focused on for our citizenry, and this is, is taking the air out of the room.
Where is this, where is the draft, I don't know, give me the minute I'm trying to-
Thank you, Mr. Chris.
Councilmembers, I, you know, I, I, I'm, as, as your staff person, I'm, I'm comfortable that this doesn't oxygen and anything. I mean, I think Senator Meredith understands that as well. This seems like it's very clear, some major points were made, everybody's in agreement, and, and then we'll, they'll, they'll give us a draft back, and we'll be seeing it before the passes.
All right, let's do it.
So, I will, um, we'll communicate with, with Davey, uh-
I'm communicating with Davey right now.
Okay.
She said she was good with it earlier.
She sent me her signature.
She sent me one too.
Bobby's gonna sign it, bitch.
Electronic signature. We, we transmit it, we'll, we'll, we'll make mention of that when she was out of town.
Somebody can sign with David.
Bobby, Bobby sent her-
Bobby's signing it.
Where do we sign it?
Where do we sign it?
Bill's got it.
Bill's got it.
Bobby, you have a signature.
Dylan's not signing it. Just signed Katie's name.
Dylan got it signed on.
That's what I wanted to do, maybe, but I didn't either.
Katie, we're in, we're in the meeting discussing the, uh, House Bill three ninety-two, and everybody is signing this letter as was originally drafted by Cameron to go forward.
Except for the eight percent.
Uh, can we get your verbal approval for someone to sign for you? Can we send this thing on? Okay, who, who would you like to sign your name for? Would you want the mayor to sign? How about the mayor signing it?
Mine would be free.
Huh?
She did.
Okay, we'll have the mayor signing for you, okay? And it'll be his signature, and it says four.
She can't come to them.
Mayor, pretend Davey, okay? All right. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. That's the last one. All right, and so Mr. Hurst is last, let's go ahead and get his signature, and then I'll put-
That's all right.
That'll make it unanimous.
I just will go to him with my, my email tomorrow, tonight.
No, no, that's the original.
The original.
Running copies, and now we gotta send it to her.
Now, we need to clarify, draft bill is not going up with this letter.
No, just the letter.
Just the letter.
And they may not accept them. I'm not gonna send it by myself, I'm not gonna, hear me, I'm not gonna do anything other than what this collective body wants done. I think y'all have just said, "Don't send the draft language up there, let them work on that whole shit."
This was very helpful.
All right. Well, and I think you, you study it and, or familiar with it, so if you do get a chance to look at something like this, I'll be your ghostwriter. Make that motion again, miss.
Are we girding?
Yes, sir, that was it.